All right. Good evening.
Oh, no.
Welcome to the September 17, 2018 regularly scheduled work session. Tonight, we have three items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card. If you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority to speak for that organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address. For the record, public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Once that item is called, there will be no other public cards except comment cards accepted. And Dawn, if you will, please sound Agenda Item Number One.
Our first agenda item tonight is discussion regarding former Milton Country Club's public outreach schedule. Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay.
Okay, good, because I didn't see anybody. Yes, good evening, Michelle McIntosh-Ross. Tonight's presentation will represent the kickoff or the starting point for our project that includes the former Milton Country Club properties as well as segments of the Milton Central Trail. Here, to give the presentation is Will Hibick from our consulting team, Kimberly Horn. Will?
Okay. I'm delighted to be back before the council, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may remember, we met nearly a year ago to work on the Milton Trails Blueprint. And so this is a subsequent follow-up to that. What I wanted to do is just take a few moments and give you an update on kind of where we are with how we're approaching the former Milton Country Club and its transformation into a public park and the planning for that, along with Companion Trail Network, and our strategy for public outreach and input for Phase One. So, I think we'll go through this pretty quickly. As you know, the city has been looking at trails and public space and parks for a number of years. We looked at a lot of these existing plans and studies through the Trails Blueprint last year. These are going to continue to be the foundation of our work going forward at the former Milton Country Club, and it just builds upon this legacy of trail planning and park planning here in the city. There's two primary objectives with the scope of this project. The first one is to identify a community vision for the park, which is 130 acres approximately of the former Milton Country Club. And part of that also is using and looking at the Fulton County, the adjacent Fulton County Public School Site and some soft-surface trails to connect through that site on the perimeter of that. And we'll be connecting and working with the school system as part of that part of the project. Phase Two is to look at the central Milton Trails, which were identified in the Trails Blueprint last year, to identify a vision for that of how we can safely accommodate a variety of users along those shared-use gravel roads for walkers, bikers, equestrian users, and also maintaining access to vehicles. And that will be Phase Two of the project. Okay? Throughout the process, we're going to be guided by these four principles. First, to design safe, comfortable, and attractive places that serve a diversity of users and provides a balance of activities. We're going to build from those current plans for trails and parks that I showed at the beginning. At all times, we want to honor Milton's distinctive rural character, and we want to value the voices of all citizens and strategic stakeholders, particularly those adjacent to the former Milton Country Club. Here's kind of what is involved in the different phases of this project. We're going to start out with Phase One on the park planning. We're going to focus on the park. We'll look at that in just a moment. That's going to involve some really tailored and strategic public involvement. We're going to do a desktop environmental screening of the course itself. We've already done that. We're not finding any significant environmental findings. We're going to do existing facilities assessment of the clubhouse, the pool, the maintenance facilities, see if there are viable uses, how those might be repurposed. Are they suitable for operation maybe for a third-party vendor going forward? And then we're going to continue to look at the existing conditions on the course itself. What can be done out there on the fairways, the sand traps? How can we create a restorative passive landscape on what used to be the golf course? Phase Two will continue public involvement. We'll look at mostly those shared-use gravel roads and how to make those connect to citywide assets throughout the city. And those trails, it's about a five-mile system running from Birmingham Falls Elementary down to Providence Park. And then the final phase will be focused on design and implementation and the costing and strategy and short-term and long-term approaches to actually implement everything that comes out of this plan. Okay? So, to date, most of our focus has been on the former Milton Country Club. We've gone out and walked a beautiful site. It is going to be a phenomenal park, a phenomenal space going forward. If you can tilt your head a little bit, we had to rotate the golf course on this map. North is pointing towards the right-hand side of the screen, just so that we can see it all. As you know, it's about 130 acres that the city purchased, give or take. There's been some easements that have been given back to adjacent property owners, so we don't have that specific acreage right now. As we're looking at the site, we're beginning to look at the space in two areas. And green is what we're calling the passive preserve. And we call it the passive preserve because of the funding mechanism that was used to acquire the site limits uses on this acreage. And then we have an additional seven acres, which is where the clubhouse, the pool, the tennis courts, the maintenance facility, and parking is, that we call the active acres. We have a little more opportunities for continued active uses in that location. Within the passive preserve, which was the fairways of the course, we divide that into the Southwoods and the Northwoods. Their character is distinctively different, and most of our focus probably will be on the Northwoods in the initial phase of this project and maybe some longer-term recommendations for the southern end of the property of the Southwoods. And then the active acres, and we've already touched on this, we're continuing to look and do that existing facility assessment on the pool, the tennis courts, clubhouse, maintenance barn. And we'll have continued dialogue and discussion with the active users of those facilities and future potential active users of the facility as part of the outreach. So, in terms of our public involvement, we kind of have outlined a really intensive public outreach strategy for the next 30 or so days. We're going to have an online public input forum. We want to make sure that all of the opportunities that we provide folks in person, they also can engage online. And so we'll be rolling that out around October 1st for about 30 days, running in tandem with all of the in-person sessions. We will be at the Crab Apple Festival all day, where we will engage and promote all of the public outreach. We'll also have a few opportunities for input there at the festival, and we'll be embedded in the booth with the city. So, we'll not have a standalone booth, but we'll be at the city. Our first actual public meetings will be two subsequent target group meetings. We're going to meet first with the 100 or 20 or so residents that live adjacent to or in proximity to the former Milton Country Club. We thought it was very important to talk to them first, engage them, and get their insights. We'll follow that up with a second target group meeting with the active users and potential active users, members of the swim team, the tennis facility, members that, citizens that have joined the pool this last year over the summer, also members of the garden club, forestry group, and the emerging Milton Trails advocacy group will be part of that discussion. On October 17th, we're going to have a joint committee meeting. We're going to bring together a lot of the city committees, including the Equestrian Committee, the Green Space Advisory Committee, the Disability Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec Committee. Have one joint discussion with them. And then October 18th, we're going to have a large public meeting. And one of the things that is important to note, on the 17th and 18th, we'll have one of our subconsultants joining us, whose name is Jan Hancock. And Jan Hancock is joining us from Phoenix, and she is an Equestrian Trails expert, who's written one of the foremost guides to trail facility, equestrian trail and facility design. So, she'll be joining us, having some more in-depth conversation with Milton's equestrian community while she's here on the ground. And then on November 5th, we'll host a public open house, informational open house, which will precede the council meeting. So, we'll have that over in community place. Folks just want to touch base with us, see how everything is flowing out, what kind of input we've gotten through the process. And then we'll come back and we'll brief you on what we've heard through this first phase of public outreach. So, that's where we are. We would love to ask you to help promote all of these dates and opportunities. We tried to keep it really simple. All meetings are at the same start time, and 8:00 PM is the approximate end time for all these discussions. Everything is held here at City Hall. So, trying to keep it really simple for the citizens and stakeholders to stay engaged, and we hope we'll see you through the process as well.
Okay, any questions?
Can I get a copy of this?
Yeah.
That'd be wonderful. I don't think it was in the packet that we, no. So, a copy would be good.
Okay. And I think Michelle has this and can distribute it?
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, Dawn, if you'd please call out item number two on our agenda.
This is the discussion of RZ 1812, Article Six, Division 18, C1, Community Business District, as it relates to gas stations. Carter Lucas.
Dawn, excuse me, one second. Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir. We do not.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is continuing discussion on the regulation of the gas stations within the C1 zoning districts. We currently have a moratorium on these types of uses within those districts, and so we're working our way through the process with some proposed modifications to the C1 land use to address that. Currently, those properties that allow the gas stations within the Form-Based Code are covered under those particular regulations, both the Deerfield and the Crab Apple Form-Based Code areas. But for those few parcels that we have outside of the Form-Based Code areas, there were no gas station regulations existing on those. And so, that's what we've been working through to try and establish those regulations. When we started, they were essentially the same as the Form-Based Code regulations. There have been some minor changes that the Planning Commission has recommended, and those were outlined in the staff memo from our first reading last week. Currently, our moratorium is going to end on Tuesday, the 25th. So, the anticipated schedule would be to move forward with these changes for the second reading coming up next Monday. So, if there were any comments or changes necessary, we'd like to address those tonight, or we will need to extend that moratorium next week as opposed to moving forward with the second reading.
Let me ask a question, Carter. Not anticipating this, but if for some reason between now and then, folks had some concerns, could that legally, could that moratorium be extended at that meeting, at our next meeting, if we don't adopt this?
I think we'd probably, we'd need to get that on the agenda prior to that. And we can also address comments and questions at the meeting for the second presentation too, if we need to.
I guess the question, let's say between now and then, there were some questions or comments. It could always be deferred too, I guess, couldn't it? Although that might defeat the purpose if the moratorium has expired.
It could certainly be deferred past the extension or past the deadline for the moratorium. You always run the risk of something being submitted.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Defeat the purpose there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Certainly. So, I didn't have any other presentation other than just to give you a highlight about where we were and if there were any questions based on the first presentation from last weekend to answer anything that came up from that.
Just one quick question. What were the Planning Commission changes?
So, they talked about some regulation associated with the Design Review Board for facilities at the gas station, air pumps, vacuums, charging stations, the destination of the fuel pump, how that was defined within the ordinance. That was it.
Are you all passing those?
A few little, you know, minor.
Are you passing those along in the recommendation?
Yeah.
Those were incorporated into what we did in the first reading.
And then just to restate, so this text amendment basically brings up these areas that were not, that are outside Deerfield and the Crab Apple.
Correct. That's correct.
Up to the same code or standard.
So, you know, we have very limited C1 parcels that are outside of the Form-Based Code. You've got a couple over by Chadwick Landfill, one right in front of Chadwick, one across the street from Chadwick. You've got a couple up in the Birmingham Crossroad area. The Union Restaurant, as well as a parcel just down the street from the Union Restaurant, they're C1, but not of a sufficient size to support a gas station. So, it's really very limited areas that this will be covering outside of the Form-Based Code.
And did this have a CZIM?
It did, and no one appeared.
No one came. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, Dawn, if you'll please sound the Agenda Item Number Three.
This is the discussion of amendments to Chapter 50 to incentivize the development of larger lots within the city of Milton. Carter Lucas.
So, just very quick on this. After our last adoption of some of the incentives within Chapter 50, there was a request that we expand those incentives to include large lot subdivisions above what was considered a minor subdivision. So, in that last adoption, we had included five lot subdivisions that are all more than three acres as a minor plat. This current change that we're talking about is going to change the process to include any size subdivision, any number of lot subdivision, as long as all of those lots are more than three acres, to exclude the Planning Commission review. So, it would be an administrative review of the preliminary plat to save some time on a large lot subdivision regardless of the number of lots. It does not change the design standards that they'll be subject to. It's only a procedural issue that they won't be required to go to Planning Commission for their preliminary plat review. It'll be an administrative review similar to what we did years ago before we involved the Planning Commission in the preliminary plat review process.
So, technically, you need two-lot subdivision with three acres per lot to qualify to skip the Planning Commission? Is that what you're saying?
Currently, that would be true because that would be a minor plat. So, now we're talking about larger, a larger number of lots, more than five lots, that would not be a minor plat, but would not require Planning Commission review. So, if you had 10 lots and they were all more than three acres, we could approve that preliminary plat administratively as opposed to going through a planning commission process.
Okay. And just to recap, the whole reasoning behind that is to incentivize large lots?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
You know, if they were on the brink of two-acre lots or whatever, possibly, they would incentivize them to.
That's correct.
To a larger lot.
So, is that the only change, the Planning Commission?
That's the only change.
That's really not an incentive. I mean, why aren't the designs? I thought the whole point was getting the design standards to where we don't have, they don't have to go through the major subdivision process of the same design standards as a one-acre subdivision.
Right. So, now you're talking about trying to, trying to strip down the design requirements on a larger subdivision, which in some cases, you just can't do. So, they have stormwater requirements and things that are going to have to be met. And the road and access requirements for these larger subdivisions, you've got to be able to provide access to these.
So, for six lots, so if someone wants to subdivide a 20-acre parcel into six three-acre lots, we're going to require the same design standards as 18 one-acre lots?
That's right.
See, I think that's just, I mean, I just don't agree with that. That's all.
So, in the previous revisions that we set up, we set up a limit of five lots that are all greater than three acres. Now, we'll say there is, there's nothing scientific about that five-lot number, but we're going to get to a point where we have to provide access and we have to provide facilities for these lots so that they're viable lots. Whether that number is five or 10, our recommendations from a staff perspective was we limit it to five at this point so that we can understand some of the implications of what this planning process is going to be. That doesn't mean that in the future, or if you would prefer us to raise that number, we can. But the higher we raise that number and the lower we make the design standards to that lot, the more difficult it is for these people, five, 10, 15 years down the road, to have a subdivision with infrastructure and facilities available to them that they can maintain as an HOA. So, what we want to do is we want to limit the liability of these HOAs. Our experience has been that an HOA has limited capacity and knowledge of infrastructure maintenance in these smaller subdivisions. When you get to the larger subdivisions, they're generally a lot more sophisticated. They have a lot more money. They have a lot more funds available to them, a lot more expertise within the developments. But these smaller ones, that's not been our experience.
So, it just sounds like we're incentivizing our one-acre lots. I mean, that's what it sounds like.
Well, maybe not incentivizing, but not going to the next step.
This isn't going to help anything.
You know, what I envision, and to your point though, with infrastructure and all that, if you have three-acre or larger lots, you know, maybe there's a lot less infrastructure in there than there is for a regular typical one-acre subdivision. So that it wouldn't be a whole lot to manage. I don't, again, to Peyton's point, I know my whole drive on this was to, yeah, incentivize somebody to do much larger lots and less density. Yeah, I think the five lots, to your point, there's no scientific basis on that. Is there, you know, is a 10-lot or 15-lot, does that make it different or?
So, they still have infrastructure needs. They still have to provide water. They still have to provide an all-weather surface for emergency access. The code currently allows them to do a gravel road.
But they have to go, I guess my question is, do you have to go through the major subdivision process if they do six lots?
Well, so the major, yeah, so there's a little bit of a procedural issue when we talk about the major subdivision process. Whether you do a minor subdivision or a major subdivision, you still have standards that you have to meet. You still have to provide stormwater management. You still have to provide access to the lots. The more lots you do, the more likely you are to have to provide engineered-type plans. But from an infrastructure standpoint, you know, the gravel roads are available to you. That would be allowed under this, under these rules. In our previous changes, we had developed what we referred to as a modified driveway, which was basically a gravel road. In either case, it's going to have to be able to support a fire truck. So, there are still some design standards available to you to reduce your infrastructure costs. But at some point, as we get to these larger lot subdivisions, somebody needs to design these. Somebody needs to make sure that, that infrastructure can be provided to these lots. And you can't put that on staff. So, at some point, we have to be able to have an engineer of record say that these lots can support the homes and the families that are going to be built on these properties.
We're just not giving any incentive. I thought we were just going to give a bunch of incentives.
Joe. So, hold it. What we were trying to do is we were trying to make it easier for folks that had fewer lots to develop those without the same infrastructure that bigger subdivisions had, right? And I remember having the discussion where we drew the line at five lots. So, we had all agreed at one point, five lots was the line that made the most sense. So, is your concern?
No, I think the concern is, it sounds like the only change we're doing is just the preliminary plat, plat review, that the same design standards are still in place. So, no matter, so you're still going through the, all the same loop or the same process if you're doing a three-acre subdivision or a one-acre. As far as, there's no incentives. I mean, there's no incentives on less infrastructure, no rural view, no rural view shed. That, I think we mentioned the impact fees were going to be less maybe.
Actually, there will be a lot of other incentives. I think Carter's only talking about this specific.
Right.
So, this is one piece of the overall puzzle. We're still working on some of those other incentives.
But did we talk about design standards were going to be changed?
My recommendation at the last one is that we do not look at changing those design standards at this point.
Or what was, I mean, I thought we were all in agreement that we wanted that. Maybe I'm confused. I don't know.
Yeah, we had some of that discussion, and we did change that for the smaller, the five lots or less. We did do that. But based on that last meeting, this change was to include larger subdivisions from a procedural standpoint, not necessarily from a design standpoint.
I remember that. Okay.
Some other areas where you'll see relief, in fact, we met on this today. You'll see it in our, ultimately, in our tree ordinance. You'll see a significant relief from the tree ordinance in our large lots to be able to provide pastures and things along those lines and also incentivize those lots. The five connected lots now, you no longer have to put in curb and gutter. You can get through into gravel, you could, in effect, do a long driveway around the road.
Yes, overall, there's some incentive.
Our goal is to, is to hit this from all sides. So, you know, you could take the items that you need to make your development the right, right for that specific development and be able to offset those overall costs to be able to make them a viable investment for people. So, this is just designed to be one possible tool in that.
Okay, maybe that's where I just got confused.
And years ago, we are. And, and years ago, we already, already made the change that, um, if you wanted to dedicate a gravel road, you could do that. So, in these larger subdivisions, you could do a gravel road, and that'll reduce your infrastructure cost, but that already exists in the code today.
Okay.
This particular change was just an extension of what we did the last time to allow a procedural incentive for the larger subdivisions of larger lots.
That's right, I remember we voted on that, and we were going to add that, I just thought we were going to get something more, that's all. I'm just, maybe I'm just, it's a Monday, I don't know.
Sorry for the, sorry for the disappointment.
That's right. Steve, could we, um, is there a chance we might get a breakdown of a, a grid sheet of, you know, all the different incentives that we have looked at and, just so we have it all on one page?
Absolutely.
We, we started this...
And I can send you out the presentations that we've done in the past.
It's been a long time, so, just to see how... I think, probably understand the, the intent here. You know, we want this to be something that jumps out at somebody that's got 10 acres, whatever, 20, that's going to put 20 homes in there, but hey, if you do three-acre lots, you know, this will make it much easier and, you know, at least get, give them that incentive to consider, strongly consider doing that.
Yeah, did, did you mention impact fees? Was that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and those impact fee credits exist. We have to, those have to be decided on a case-by-case basis by the council. But the provision or the allowance for an impact fee credit, um, exists in the current code. We just have to pay it. So, so there's not an impact fee credit that you don't have to pay it, somebody's paying that impact fee.
But TDRs play a role in this.
Correct.
You know, as you're looking to build out those, those larger estate lots, uh, they'll be able, if, if, we're in the process of working with our consultant to, to really build out our T, our TDR, uh, program and bank, and long-term, we believe we're going to be able to greatly increase the demand for TDRs, um, that plays a role in this as well too, because that offsets your, your basis in the property.
Okay.
Well, I think everybody's on board, it's, uh... Now you know what my wife gets sometimes. We're looking for, you know, we're looking for stuff that really makes it worthwhile to do larger lots. Okay, any other questions on that?
Yeah, just one more. So, so you can have three-acre lots, and we, we bypassed the Planning Commission, but all the same design standards are still there. They're just over, that is, it saves a little bit of time. That's, is that what the...
Correct.
...is to the developer? So it's like a month?
Correct. So in that, uh, window above five acre, five lots that are more than three acres, that's where this would apply. Five lots and less are addressed by the changes that we adopted, uh, last month, I believe.
Anybody else? Okay, that's, uh, we have no public comment, correct. I can ask you on that. Anything else? That concludes our, our agenda here. I just thought I'd make a, a comment too. We, um, Sarah, Steve, and I, and Shannon, uh, went and met with the DOT. Everybody's aware of the DOT's road widening project on State Route Nine that I remember 12 years ago, it was 10 years behind, so it's been in the works for a long, long time. But, you know, we have several residents that were being impacted, and, uh, we had a great meeting with, uh, DOT, and, and most of the neighborhoods were represented and seemed to walk away happy, and, you know, uh, DOT's agreed to shift over and at their expense, do a retaining wall, which will keep from having to take their berm out. Uh, also, it'll be narrower, um, they'll still have to put a sidewalk there, and that will vary depending on utilities. Um, it's got to be what, a 12 or 14-foot wide free area anyways, so whether we did a five-foot sidewalk or had, made them do a 10-foot, it doesn't really matter, that's just going to affect utilities where, where they are. And then they're going to do the trail system on the other side on the commercial side, so, um, should be a good win-win, so that, uh, worked out okay. So, anybody have anything else? All right, that'll conclude this work session. Thank you.
[inaudible]